Where's your cohort?
That's gonna be, I'll be alright.
Yeah, please.
I'll get the bags.
Yeah, they walked in. They ride on time. It's raining. It's getting bad. It's bad, it's bad.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That is?
Yeah, it has five feet.
Oh, it's five.
Yeah. Want you to see.
He's over there.
I'm on the drone.
I want you to meet John.
Oh, yeah, John Baker.
Okay.
Well, you hit the.
The battery is probably about to go down.
Yeah, but this did. Are you blind?
Yeah.
Well.
I didn't do.
Now that A D D's.
I'll write them all in. Six fifty-six?
Six fifty-six or?
Ah, fifty-six. It's six fifty-six.
The west end of my club.
They are, I didn't do that.
We did not.
My daughter.
My daughter don't do that.
You got a phone and my TV?
Let's see it.
It's just like all from back down.
I think it's on batteries. It's just a cell with fireplace. Ever since we got married. That's the only one we got around.
My son's got a lawn mower.
You bet. You don't even need a remote for TV. We can reappoint you. We can reappoint you.
Whatever.
Can. Ain't nobody ready. You are not, you're gonna move alright, old man. Yeah, I'll be right behind you.
I did go up and look at that house to keep parking to him, but then.
Where?
Also earlier.
No, I said, move to Canada.
To what?
You work?
Yeah, yeah. I doubt she will. I doubt it. There are, but I don't think there's enough of them. I don't think there's enough of them. Could it make everybody move up to Canada?
It's just. Just everything else. Everything's bitching. No more, no more just. He's our work, isn't he?
You know what's we'll have now is courts gonna come in here and I think, oh man, we got five minutes. It's only one o'clock.
It's not on, it's just, I just stuck it in the holder.
It's loud enough. I know you.
Hey, everybody.
Sean come.
Yeah, he said he's running late. He should be here in a minute. Well, it's not ready. Call man or? I'm sorry, Pastor Tim Ward of the New Testament Baptist Church. I pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We have to just live and enjoy life. We thank you for each man and woman that sits on this council and is here to serve our community. We pray, Lord, for wisdom and direction to lead a prosperous community. We thank you, Lord, for our country. We thank you for the soldiers that are serving our country all over the world. Most of all, we're thankful for Jesus and him. We have salvation. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the angels.
Praise the angels to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which the saints. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rose song, please. Here.
Ms. Stewart, here. Wendell Walker.
Here.
Stephen Holt.
Here.
Stan Moran.
Here.
Sean Simpson. Wendell Moore. Raymond Hatton.
Here.
Jim, Jim Ed Ransum.
Here.
And Shane Hamilton. Mayor, we do have a quorum.
So everyone had a chance to read over a previous meeting minutes. July eighth. Motion accepted.
Second.
Jim Ed, uh, second by Raymond. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Then we have our public comment, Ms. Mayor, Carolyn McCrery. Wherever you, if you wanna come up to the podium or?
This is fine.
Okay. That's fine with us.
Uh, good evening. My name is Carolyn McCrery and I represent the McCrery Building downtown Lono. And we are, before I go in further, I wanted to leave my opponent, John Baker, he's here to answer any legal questions that you all might have. And I hope you will ask it because he knows all the legal questions, um, that I don't. I want to tell you that, uh, I granted the city of Lono a ten-foot easement for the only purpose, a beautification and a trail. Much has changed in downtown for us and that is that most of my parcels is now used by USDA. USDA needs more room for parking and equipment and for the maneuvering of the equipment. USDA, USDA has had a positive impact on Lono. There are thirty to fifty employees. They come to the office every day. These people shop, these deals. In Lono, every day. The Department of Homeland Security is requiring USDA to get some rest of their parking lot to secure its property. Our proposal to the city is that McCrery Farms will hire an electrician and move the electric lines north to the city's property and execute the release termination of the nineteen ninety-nine easement. This easement termination will allow us to better maximize use of the parcel for the needs of USDA. I consider the city's release termination of the nineteen ninety-nine akin to the twenty twenty dating away of Dr. Holmes Medical Clinic, which the city had received as a gift. The city received ten thousand dollar payment for Dr. Holmes' property. This ten-foot easement is now needed to accommodate business downtown. I hope the city will agree with our proposal. And that it is a win-win offer. Thank you. Uh, and I open it up for any questions, John. Do you think that, that this is random to some of y'all? Are there any questions?
That, that easement, is it north of where you put that new parking lot? Is that right there?
Yes, huh, it's ten feet behind, I call it behind.
Being north of the, the parking lot. What, what does the city have in there, Wayne? Do we have?
All I know of is that electric and then our twelve-inch water line, doesn't it?
Goes in there?
From what they, the boy was marked the other day, it's right underneath that new fence.
Where is the water line located?
Right underneath y'all's new fence, y'all put, but it's, you know, probably eight, ten.
It's under the electrical and ice rack.
It is.
How, how deep was that water line in there?
I don't know, I wasn't here, one of, but I'm gonna say eight to ten foot deep probably. That's why it's deep enough, you didn't have to.
How, how deep did you say?
I'm gonna say eight to ten foot. I don't know exactly.
The sewer is.
But it's, yeah, but I don't know. Like I said, that was all done.
I don't think anything we, we might do would bother ten feet down.
Ah, I wouldn't think, but I don't, like I said, I don't really know. Cause all that was done about probably six years ago, five or six years ago.
So what are you willing to do with that easement?
I want the city to grant me a release termination of my big grant that I made. The grant I made was a mistake. I, I didn't think it at the time, but I find that it is, uh, and that I need that property now. I was not thinking long-term when I made that easement. A long-term, I said, you know, it's twenty-five years, that's long-term to me. But, uh, I had no idea that we would be doing this with USDA at this time. And they, they take a long room. They have some big equipment. They may be gonna have some bigger.
Rob, do you know how deep that water line is?
No, but I know there's a twelve-inch and a six-inch goes down, uh, Jefferson right there. Goes right under their parking lot.
But I mean, on the north side.
Yeah. It's on the north side, it's a twelve-inch.
And then it tees off and goes down.
Yeah, it tees for about twelve inches and goes down Jefferson and goes right underneath their parking lot. But I, I wouldn't know when they put it in, you know? I'd be guessing.
Any questions?
But the release of the easement will not require any movement of the water line. The easement was granted for recreational trail, a tree plant. So the water line's not gonna be moved. The water line would stay where it is. This would just let her on the surface be able to use that, move that fence back a little bit if she needs to, so those trucks can park in ways that are safer and not knocking the fence around. So the water line is not affected.
Let me, it's just, uh, if something happened to that water line, you know, we had to get to it, what was, who, who's gonna be at the expense?
Whoever damages it is gonna need to pay.
You what?
Whoever damages any water line like that is gonna be responsible.
I'm talking about just like this safe fence, it, it blows out or something, we have a leak there. And it's, you got a fence sitting there. Who's gonna be responsible for taking that fence down and fixing that problem underneath, you know? Who's gonna be responsible for that?
Well, it depends. I, I've wondered if there is a, an easement for the water line. I haven't seen one yet. Sometimes those easements talk about that. But usually, in my experience, if, if the water department needs to move something to get access to it, they usually return it to the best they can to what it was.
So I have a question. So you're saying, you're, you're saying we don't have an easement for this water line? Is that what you're saying?
I just haven't seen it yet.
I mean, that's what this is right here, isn't it?
Well, I mean, y'all, this is, to me, this is the, the same situation as Matt Wool's deal. You know, if you build a fence across a city easement, then you take, you accept the risk that, that if, uh, your, your, your thing that you built across it has to be moved or, or damaged in some way by us repairing it, that, that it's on the landowner because they, they knew where the line was when they built it and, and whatever over it. And so that's why it's generally okay to put fences over it because not a whole lot of loss if you have to, if, if you have to move a fence to do something. But that's where the Wool's issue was a lot more complicated because he had a whole building over, over that. Um, as far as whether there's an easement or not there for the water line, I don't know. There's a lot of places where there aren't easements. Um, but it's certainly been there long enough to where the city could, could assert an easement, uh, in, uh, across there. So for all practical purposes, we have an easement there where the water line is. Um, chances of anything like that happening are probably less, less than, um, than if it were a building or something more permanent there. But, but the city does need to think about what, um, you know, what the original purpose was of the easement, which was to c- connect the two parts of the trail, which hasn't happened. She's right about that. Um, and, and just, uh, whether we're giving up all access to that if there did need to be some sort of repair done to that water line. Um, but I think we could handle that in documents as well, though. Uh, you know, if we acknowledge the easement in some sort of transfer back to Ms. McCrery of, of that land, we could, we could reserve an easement for ourselves for the water line there. Um, so I, I, I think the real question is, do we ever intend to actually do something with that land? Um, to connect those two portions of the walking trail? I had to pull up Google Earth to look at it, to get a good picture of it here. But do we actually ever intend to connect those two portions? Um, if we do, we wouldn't be able to if we gave that easement back. But if we don't, then, then maybe that's, that's not that big of a deal to just have that section not be connected like that. So that's, that's kinda up to the council as to whether they would want to do that. I think we could handle the water line issue with appropriate language and any sort of transfer back. And if so, then how, how, basically how much? Because, you know, we're basically selling it back to her, uh, the, the easement that she had sold, sold or granted to us initially. Right, I, I just heard what Cindy said. This also kinda ties up into our issue with the new E V chargers over there. Um, I was trying to pull up in our notes, uh, minutes from earlier that we've got five years that we have to keep those E V chargers up there. And the power box for that is over in this easement that we're talking about there. Now, again, I think that's something we could negotiate to, to figure out a better way to work that out for both of us. And number two, I'm not sure that the city's gonna keep all of those spots once it doesn't have to anyway. Uh, but that's something for, for a later discussion on, on that. So we, we can't just get rid of it, but I don't think that's what they're saying anyway. I think they're, they're acknowledging that that would be moved in some way and, and accepting the cost of the movement of that, of the power box for the E V chargers.
Which just repairing it was for how many thousand?
Thirteen thousand.
That's just to repair it. Maybe it's gonna be way more than that to relocate everything.
Until it's all ours. Would they move it or the people, I mean, with the, whoever, wherever we got those, would they have to move it?
I, I think that's what they, Ms. McCrery and, and John were saying is that they would, they would assist in getting that moved to, to basically our property instead of currently it's on the McCrery easement. Um, they would assist in getting that moved to, to wherever, to, to where it wouldn't be on her easement anymore so that she would have o- options on that.
I didn't know until it was hundred percent ours. Could just any electrician move it or would the?
What's the purpose of us giving it back to her, selling it back to her?
Huh?
If that, there's, ain't no fence already there? So what is the purpose of us selling her back that ten-foot easement?
I, I think she's got, they've got plans to expand that. That, that may be a better question for John or Ms. McCrery, but that, they've got ex- plans to expand what would be fenced in so that they could have additional things parked there.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, that's the answer. We, we would like to be able to maximize the, the room north towards within some or all of that ten feet by either moving the fence or at least having vehicles able to move it back in there fully. Right now, that electrical stub for the, for the E V chargers is right against the parking lot and actually has a little fence dogged around it. We're worried about that thing getting backed into, and the whole thing is a little tight with this, their equipment. And so we're trying to accommodate them, uh, and, and give them more breathing room for parking and storing equipment there.
I mean, I just don't see where we, somebody would spend all that money doing that and now they're gonna expand it again?
Where it's like, was there about two more foot left north of that new fence?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Is it four feet left? But that'd be down in that ditch.
I think there's about six or seven more feet to the north.
Oh, yeah, there's probably eight feet. No, 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 I'm sorry. I think there's four or five feet. It's probably about five feet.
Okay, so.
And, and how wide's a walking trail that would connect to that?
It's eight, I think.
So that's one of the reasons they.
About eight.
Asked for that to begin with, was so it.
I mean, I.
Not sure how you walk from, from the depot and have to walk out on the road all the way around the cloud through the grass to get up on the walking trail.
I mean, I don't know.
It was the purpose of it.
I don't know what the future holds or what anybody will wanna do three years from now. I may not be here. So, I mean, I, I don't know. You know what I mean? As far as putting anything through there. So I don't, I mean, Lord, I.
Miss, it's hard for me to give up our easement when we have utilities in there. It's hard for me to do. Let's be honest with you. Did you just get into legal matters down the road?
Anything else in there? I don't have a clue. Cause I wasn't here when all that was done. I don't know, have any idea what all sound through there.
Let me be clear, I'm not arguing either way for this.
Christmas lights is right through there, correct?
Right, that'd have to be moved.
It's through there.
It'd have to be moved her whole, how long is that whole property? Is it like a hundred feet? Yeah, y'all, your whole, how lo- how long is your property east and west? How, you know? Oh, is it that mu- okay, so it all had to be moved, the whole length of her property back north.
I said they pour asphalt and we have a water line bus. We'll go in there, dig it all up, and we'll put it back. Close digging the asphalt and. I don't think there are any more questions.
I'd have to go over there, I'd have to look. Is there enough room to put our stuff? If we take four or five foot off that.
I just think we need to look into it a little bit more further. I mean, did this, you know, spur of a deal here, we need to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
Need to look and see what we do, what we actually have and we don't have. You know, I'm kinda like.
I'm not a permanent thing. Whatever they do will be.
See if there's any more utilities might be there and what access it would affect for the walking trail.
I would. I would want to do that before I, I mean, before I blow it on, you know, I mean, I, you know.
Could you find out what was in there? Yeah, I mean, we can research it and see. I had to.
Maybe if I were up to it or something, well, you.
I don't know.
The city has property that you want's the easement. And it has enough property to make a walking trail if they want it. In front of your, um, electric car chargers. There's property, not a whole lot, but none's a whole lot either.
You know, about the south of those.
He's talking about putting them on the north.
Yes, go south of the chargers. Chargers are placed right there on that off-street parking.
Yeah.
You'd have to tie it in that ditch.
City has no property there before my easement starts, my property starts.
You'd have to table it to, for us to find out all that.
I bet, yeah, I mean, I bet, I bet we need to table it and look, search a little deeper into it before we make up. I mean, that's just me, I mean.
Well, what?
Second.
So have a motion from Wendell to research?
Can we get some further information, what's in there and what?
And what he plans, if any, what we might wanna do later?
If you move that electrical box, you at least gotta find out from them E V people, they need to move it or can anybody move it?
Well, I wish, that's another question. And seconded by Raymond, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, well, let us research a little more and we'll get back to you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, now, Mr. Neil Schaefer.
Neil Schaefer, number seventeen, Privet Park Drive here in Lono, and I'm here tonight just to make a little more clarification on what we talked about last month on the easement of Pine Street. And, uh, I think we've got a copy of, uh, survey done by Maxwell Surveying, uh, for the Methodist Church when we bought that property on the, on the, where the Presbyterian Church is, they're on the south side. And there's a point of reference on the south side of Pine Street in that easement. And there's a pin still there and, and the pin is, is on the south side of the sidewalk. So there's a sidewalk, then the street, and then the sidewalk on the Methodist side, which will be the north part. And that's sixty feet from outside a sidewalk to outside a sidewalk. So from what I found, that that would be the city property, is everything inside of those sidewalks. Which would encompass the parking area on both sides of the center part of the street. And I just wanted to see if anybody had any questions on that and, and resubmit my request, uh, to get in line for paving of that section of Pine Street between Park and South Center. Does everybody see that, that point of beginning? It's kinda in the middle of that survey with a little arrow on it. And there's a pin still there. And that pin is from my index finger to my thumb off of the sidewalk. And then you start measuring there, north of that sixty feet to the other side of the sidewalk on the north side of Pine Street there. So I'm thinking that's probably city easement between those sidewalks.
Have you had a chance to locate it, Mayor?
For me?
Yeah. Or have somebody located it?
Our easement's like that all over town. I mean, in your yard?
Yeah.
The city's property goes up in your yard several feet.
Don't mean you're gonna put a straight up in there.
No, that's what I mean. No strate's over twenty, twenty-two inch, twenty-two feet wide.
Yeah.
But our easement's sixty.
Yeah, the, the sides are what's getting rough. The center's fine, it's been paved. But there's part, the parking for the child care is on both sides and they park in there every day and it, it needs, it needs some improvement and some striping. And I just, uh, wanted to make sure that that was clearly the city's and then get in line when funding's available. For at least paving that outside to bring it up even with the center and, uh, get it a little bit better shaped for the citizens that are parking.
Which way do they park in there?
Angle parking.
I've been in there and they've been everywhere, every direction.
It, it's striped for angle parking and I noticed that they've run out of parking on the south side for the childcare workers. So a few of them are parking parallel on the north side, which we can remedy that if it needs to be. So a few of them are parking parallel on the north side, which we can remedy that if it needs to be. But, uh, that's just because they ran out of parking on the south side, which is primarily the employees. And I think, I can't remember, I think there's sixteen childcare employees and a pastor and a secretary of the church. So you've got about eighteen people parking over there on a daily basis. Anybody got any questions about the easement or?
No, I don't.
There's no further questions. If y'all could just put us on the list, uh, uh, when funds become available, I'd appreciate it.
Ginger, are you certain that we own that property?
No, I was actually coming in here. I, I had had, my late main late searcher at the title company was not in today. But when, when I talked to one of the others, we had concluded that that was the church's property. But then when Neil had this survey, that makes me wanna ask a few more questions on that. So I, I'm not.
Well.
I'm not sure that it's not the city's easement in that.
Property pins are most of the time on your property, up in your yard, on the corner of your yard.
Well, let's go back to those big trees that y'all didn't want me to cut that's on city property. We wouldn't do that. I'm, I mean, I'm just saying.
We just need to, I mean, I think we need to find ownership of that. If they're, if they're saying we own it. Cause I'm not gonna vote to do something that's gonna be illegal in, for this town. So we need to find out for sure who owns those parking areas. Because just because we have a sixty-foot right-of-way, which we have all over the county, does not mean that I can tr- that I control all of that. I can put utilities in it, but that don't mean I can pave part of your driveway going into your house thirty feet. So, I mean, we, we just need to make sure. Only thing my, my deal is, is doing it, I don't have a problem doing it. If we're legal, we're legal. But I wanna make sure it's ours if it's ours.
I, I, I think you've identified the, the question that needs to be answered on there is, is it ours? And I'm kinda leaning towards what Neil said that it, that it is. Because I think with the pins set where they are, I think that's not just setback lines. I think that's actually their property lines.
It's their property pins, sure.
And then when they dedicated it to the city as, as part of the, um, the subdivision, I think that the city's property is to the north of those pins, like, like what Neil was saying, uh, where, where everybody's parking there on, on Pine Street. And if that's the case, well then, first question is, is it city property? Second question is, do, is that part of what we wanna do to maintain? We're not maintaining the Methodist Church's property, we're maintaining, um,
City property.
Right, city property and, and off-st- yeah, on-street parking. And that's, that's a, a separate question from the do we own it question. So, I would like to maybe report back to us on the do we own it question because I, I, I feel like you convinced me that we do own it.
Yeah, if, if we, if we do, I'm fine with that. I mean, I just wanted.
And Ginger, if we do, we wouldn't stop it.
Right.
I mean, that, it wouldn't be an expense for the city to do that, because you'd be doing that all over town for every church.
Right, well, everybody who has on-street, on-street parking on the, on their streets like that, um, would be, uh, subject to that. So that's, that's why it's, it really is two questions, you know, do, do we own it? And then number two, what are, what, what do we wanna extend on this, knowing that we potentially are opening up to everybody wanting?
Yeah, what you do for one, you're gonna do for everyone.
Right, right.
Well, and I just, I just wanna reiterate that, that, you know, we've got seventy-five kids and it is public park there, so. All right, if you'll let me know what else happens on this, I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, thank you. Now, the Lonoke County Library, anybody? Okay. No library. Um, now, Community Senator Director Mike Brown?
Good evening.
Evening.
Okay, covering my report for July, uh, Mayor, I told you last time, if I get over a thousand.
I'm glad you said that. I don't wa- I don't wish nothing bad, don't get me.
You, you say.
You got real close, so.
We actually decreased close to a hundred, so we're gonna, I guess I'm gonna tell my folks that we need to have a campaign to get over a thousand members. Um.
I think if you tell them I'll get a pie in the face, you probably have a lot more people join.
You can, uh, see the numbers, we had a decent month, uh, and still got a hefty balance in the, uh, this, uh, operating, uh, events. Baptist Health will be at the center on the twenty-eighth. Uh, our general member of the month is Dorothy Neely. Uh, we're planning a fall events, uh, which our main one is, uh, basketball. Uh, as soon as soccer gets started, we'll start registering kids for basketball. We had a Baptist school event yesterday that went real well. Also in the packet, uh, pickleball has been growing tremendously. And I tried to play it and can't do it. So, researched and come up with a, 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 another, uh, it's an offshore pickleball that you don't have to move. It's called Jas- Jazzmitten, and you just stand there and hit the ball between the nets and, uh, uh, and it's, it's, it's a fun game and it's, it's, uh, pretty easy. And, uh, we got, uh, one net, probably go try and get another one. So, uh, public can, uh, come out and, and, and play it. It's called Jazzmitten. And you'll see a picture of it in the, in the packet, and it's, 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 it's fun. And, uh, that's all I've got.
Got any, got any questions for Community Senator? All right, thank you, sir. Now, Fire Department Chief Justin Wittenberg?
Good evening. Sorry, wasn't here last month. The state team, U S R team got deployed to New Mexico for flooding and I got to go with it.
How did that go?
That was very, very interesting. You think we have flooding around here, that disappears. It may not even be raining and then all of a sudden you got a flood. A really bad flood. So, I got to take turns that. Um, all I have this month is my report. Uh, we had forty-three calls last month. Uh, seven of them overlapping, we gave bay twice, average on same time of twenty-four minutes. Any questions?
Anybody from the Fire Department?
I wanted to give an update on the vehicles that y'all approved to get fixed last month. Uh, the tanker is back. It's been gone for quite a while. We finally got it back. The pump that y'all, it's getting repaired right now. Check on it today, about another three or four weeks, it should be fixing back in town.
Thank you, sir.
Love it.
Public Works, uh, Director Robert Sullivan?
Y'all been having a lot of problems?
No, we can't handle. We had, uh, two new water taps this, last month. We had two main breaks. And one was on Sailor Road, and somebody was flat on track of them, just broke it in the middle of the creek. And that took us all night to fix. And we repaired four service lines and, uh, one sur- service line that the, all contractors didn't glue nothing together.
And I've got pictures of that if y'all want.
We, we repaired that. And, uh, y'all?
Any questions for me?
Yeah, I got a question. Uh, only water leak out there on Sailor Road. Are we gonna absorb the cost on that or are we gonna?
I'm trying to find out who did it.
Yeah.
Cause it's gotta either, let's see, the state or those contractors won.
Yeah.
It was Keywood.
It ain't like no one with me, with me.
But I'm.
I wouldn't need to it either.
Well, they caved it, you know, they caved that road in, calling all that rock out there, and I don't know.
Well, Keywood's the one that broke the water line. The state hasn't been over there.
Okay. Well, I'll get with them and.
Yeah, I can get you.
State is blowing the road up though. You give me a list of how many hours y'all spent, whatever pipe we used and all, we'll get that.
All right.
Take care of it.
I get it for you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now Police Department Chief Keith Graham?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, for my monthly report, I, you all have copies of basically everything that we did last month. Two hundred and fourteen dispatch calls that we've done, uh, two felony arrests, warrants served, and nineteen misdemeanor warrants served. We've made five misdemeanor arrests and six felony drug arrests. Those were all drugs, every single one. So, we're trying to hit that hard. Nineteen citations and sixty-two reports that we took for the month. In regards to the monthly numbers, we're also gonna start keeping track of our warnings. So every, anytime an officer gets out with anyone, no matter if they're walking down the street, traffic stops, they're gonna have a documented warning. We've developed a form that should be hopefully tomorrow or the next day when we get the copies of it. So the violator, if they're on traffic stop, will get a copy of their warning, and then officer will also have a copy. That'll help us keep track of our bias-based policing. So we can't say we're stopping the, you know, single white females or black or green or whatever color. It'll keep them better track of what's, we're actually doing with officers. So if we have a complaint, I can reference back and see, hey, this officer was stopping all these juvenile females. That would look a little odd. It gives us ways to investigate it. So, hopefully that will be in the next couple of days. We'll start that and go from there. Uh, second part is the, uh, PD improvements. If you haven't been by the Police Department, I would encourage everybody to come and take a look at it. We're making massive improvements. We've knocked down some walls, we're getting knocked down a few more walls. I've separated the PD improvement into three different phases. The first phase is almost done. We're just finishing painting the front part and then we'll be good. We painted the walls, we painted the doors, we painted off one office and put new carpet in one office. So it looks a lot better. Much more inviting instead of that brown, whatever color that was chosen. It's a gray color with white dramb on the doors and everything. So, it's looking better. Uh, also in the phase one, we're going to be changing out the awning on the front of the building to an all-blue awning. The blue squares on the bottom of the front of the building, all that's gonna be repainted to match the awning. So it'll be a lot more professional, a lot more inviting. We also developed a new PD flag, flag. We took our shoulder patch that's on our uniforms and put a, put that on a flag. So we're gonna put that on one corner of the building and American flag on the other corner of the building. Much more inviting, look more, uh, professional. The second, they also in the first one, we're tanning the front of the windows, a mirrored tent. So we can take down those ugly blinds that have been there for God knows how long, but it'll look a lot more professional. You'll see mirrored on the front. From the inside, you'll be able to see out. So it looks a lot better. Officers will be, be able to see what's going on on the street in front of them. The second part, phase will basically be our book-in area and our jail. My goal is to have the jail opened up by the end of the year, and that's what we're working on. Hopefully it'll be quicker. We have our new captain coming in, his, uh, name's Tory Gradley. He used to work here several years ago, and he worked at Lonoke County for a little bit, and now he's at Pulaski County. So he'll be starting next Monday. So he's gonna help push the date of that jail opening sooner in my, my hopes of it. We're gonna redo the book-in area. We're gonna knock down the old wall that separated the chief's office and the hallway. So it's gonna open everything up. That's where everything will get processed, the prisoners when they come in, they'll come through the side door, so they don't have to come up front at all. So we make it a lot more secure for the people that work there, our administrative system and whatnot. And then the third phase will be the back of the building. We're gonna knock down the old bunkhouse and clean all that area up so we can pull cars in there if we need to, to hold for a crime scene or anything. Any questions on that? And we're doing most of the work ourselves, so cost-wise, we're doing pretty good right now with it. Uh, the next thing that I'd like to ask is approval from the, from the council to take my unit to my house at night and drive that home. The reason why is, it helps me respond to calls, cause I come out at all hours of the day and night. So, instead of taking my personal vehicles, all that here to get in a city vehicle, then go to a call or go and do what I need to. This will help reduce the amount of response time. So if we have something, as what happened in the ball's bluff a few weeks ago, if that happened, that means I'd have to come all the way to the PD. I can't run lights and sirens, cause I don't have that on my personal vehicle. Have to go to the PD, get a vehicle, and then go to wherever the scene's at. So that would delay the response time. And I don't think anybody wants a delay when it comes to police whatsoever. So I'm asking for the approvals on the city council to, to do that. And then the final thing is just approval of the, uh, mutual aid agreement with Lonoke County. It just allows us to work with them, to be covered, and for, and for when they need help and we need help, we work together available. So those who approve this.
I wanted to, with you, thank Brother Jimmy and, uh, for the paint.
Yes, sir.
They bought us ten gallons of paint and donated for them, which was really nice and a lot of help.
Wow.
So.
We've been using trustees from Lonoke County to help paint and stuff, so they've been tremendous help.
So.
I'll make a motion, let him drive his truck back and forth home.
Motion, Stephen, to allow the truck to go on.
I'll second.
Second stand, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, Karen. And then we need to, uh, the, uh, mutual agreement with the Lonoke County Sheriff's Department, which is kinda, we help them, they help us. You know, we've done it in the past.
Kinda the same thing that we have as a city and a county.
Yeah.
And that's the standard agreement that was approved the last time under, uh, the Volcheek. So it's, there's no change, just names are, it just covers us with maybe a sheet now.
You need a motion on that? I'd make a motion.
Motion from Wendell to go ahead with a mutual agreement with the county.
Second.
Second by Stephen, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, Karen.
That concludes my topics. That's it. Pretty easy today.
Thank you, and we're proud of the jail.
Thank you.
All right, uh, do we need to? We don't need to read this, do we, this mutual aid?
No, it's just a proof in the document.
Okay, next, uh, Art's a mosquito, Director Evan Jacobs?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm proportionally pretty sure right now, we're, uh, primarily focused on getting fall ball rich, fall ball and soccer registrations. Uh, the last day for those is gonna be August twenty-fourth. Uh, we'll have, uh, sign-up forms going home to the schools. Uh, hopefully I'll have them there for the first day here in a couple of days. I've just gotta go up there to the administrative office and get them to approve to send them home with everybody. Uh, do we have any questions for me?
I guess not.
How long have we been spraying Miller Road?
Uh, for as long as I've been here. I talked to Greg about that and he said for at least ten years now.
They wasn't when I was here.
That's just what I did thought.
I don't know.
How far? How far? I mean, like.
All the way Thomasin to the back of the ballpark?
And the reason we do that is because, um, as I told y'all before, um, the winds we get are primarily from the south.
Right.
And, uh, mosquitoes can float up to a mile on a breeze like that. And the reason we go out like that is to get those mosquitoes that are coming in from the city, from the outskirts, and treat them. Because if we were, say, only go on Fish Hatchery, we'd still have all those mosquitoes be blowing into the town. So this just allows us to more effectively cover the city, especially on the south side.
Wind ain't blowing that much right now. Well, I mean, well, if we're spraying down Miller Road, that's not gonna cover from there over Fish Hatchery or from Miller Road to Bob Long, which is Palm Street. There ain't no way. I mean, I don't see no reason for us to spray that.
Well, to me.
That's a long way.
To me, to cover that much area.
Yeah, it's not.
No, no. I was just gonna say, this, uh, this route was designed by, uh, Greg Roydin and a gentleman named Danny Meyer, who I've mentioned before. And between them, they've got somewhere in the ballpark of fifty years of experience with a lot of education, uh, and background in this.
Danny Meyer's also a chemical salesman too.
Well, and I, you know, we was talking about the houses, it, it goes what, fifty feet?
It goes approximately a block and a half is what, uh, is what that test they did a couple of years ago.
That's a quarter of a mile from Miller Road.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I think it's. I think Fish Hatchery is our line and shit, uh, that's what. Trees is our line.
That's what I think. Now, if we spray down Palm all the way to the ballpark, that's, that's fine. I mean, when we're having, when ball season's going.
Spray down by the ballpark when ball season's in, no problem with that. That's a lot of spray.
It's approximately, well, I, once again, I'm also asking Greg about this, um, at the rate we're putting out, it's less than a tenth of a gallon of spray is what's estimated.
I mean, I, I just don't seem to sense it. I mean, I, I just don't see no sense in it. I mean, I'm not a chemical engineer here, but I, condescendingly, to me, it don't seem like, it makes any sense.
Fish Hatch Road and Tracy Lane?
I would, I mean, I don't see how that chemical gonna go from Miller Road to get to Tracy Lane.
I don't, I don't either, but it's up to y'all.
Evan, are we still treating the rice fields? Yes, we're still treating the rice fields, uh, whenever, uh, that's what Tidwell's doing, Tidwell sprays the lark side.
Are y'all putting drip in the rice fields?
Are we spraying with the plane, even mosquitoes?
Yes, sir, we are spraying with the plane, I'll have to check when the next date is, I think we still have another, uh, three flights scheduled, but that's gonna be with the, uh,
Larbicide.
Well, that's not with the Larbicide, this is with the, uh, the Larbicide, we're pretty well done with it, because most of the farmers have cut the water on the rice, so there's not any standing water, uh, right now, as far as Larbicide's concerned, we're mostly treating ditches, but we're using the side-by-side with that, for that. Uh, the plane that actually flies the adult side spray, uh, that comes from a, uh, company out of the Mississippi, that comes and flies that.
You can change the route, Mayor, however you, y'all wanna ruin it, but I just don't think, I mean, me personally don't think we need to be running Miller Road. I just don't think it's helping us that much, I mean.
What if, what if the wind coming out of the north, you still spray it?
Uh, we try not to, uh, like I said, we monitor the wind conditions.
And because you've been talking here months, months ago about not hitting some of these streets, you know, we've talked about, you know, the, over here on this side town, you know, we've talked about not spraying those.
Yes, and you're correct, if we're, if the wind's coming out of the north, that serves no purpose. You're completely correct on that, Wendell.
I would say, yeah, Tracy and Palm was, and Fish Hatchery would be it. As far as I'm concerned, that's, and y'all wanna do different, that's. I mean, I ain't no rocket scientist, but if we ha- if we're spraying on Miller Road, and if that's covering from there to Fish Hatchery, then we could cut down on chemical in town and spray every other block. I mean. I just don't think it's worth spraying on.
I think we need to put the spray in town, till out of town.
Okay, we'll adjust the route to.
Okay.
Whatever y'all like to do, I'll let my guys know.
Yeah, that's, we'll just keep it at that, yeah, so, Fish Hatchery, Tracy Lane, and Palm.
Far south as we go.
Uh?
Far south as we go.
Yes, yes. Okay, any other questions? Okay, that's it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business, uh, solar array. Any questions on it? Okay, on to new business, the results from legislative audit, two thousand twenty-three. Segregation of duties, which we get, every little town in the state gets, cuz we don't have enough people to, and never will, to segregate the way the bigger cities do, so. Then we've got the six-month budget numbers.
We have to, we have to.
Oh, we have to, okay. So, need a motion, the legislative order, or if anybody's got any questions from the legislative audit.
I make a motion to accept.
Motion to accept the legislative audit, Jim, eh? Second by Stephen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Now the six-month budget numbers. Any question on those? Y'all, everything look okay to y'all?
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve that, the six-month.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion from Wendell to approve the six-month budget numbers. Second by Stephen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Now the copier lease renewal. Both vendors on state contract. We've already had a contract with Dynamax, correct, that was unsatisfactory?
We, uh, we're with standard business system now, and we have been for several years, we have no issues, the service is great, um, when, before we started this one, we demoed like five different machines, and we ran them for weeks at a time, to see which one that would do what we required it to do, and, so this one has worked fine for us, year after year after year, so, we'd kinda like to continue on.
I make a motion to approve, if y'all satisfied with it.
Motion from Wendell to go with the standard business systems lease.
I'm satisfied with it.
Second.
Second by Stephen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. And, uh, approval of new deputy court clerk, uh, is it?
I think it's Valian.
Valian Bearman? I know I hadn't had a chance to meet her, but.
She hasn't actually started yet, but the City Council has to approve, hiring of the deputy clerk.
Right.
I think she's gonna start Wednesday or Thursday. She works as a dispatcher at the Garlock Police Department now.
I need approval for her. Did you have your?
Uh-huh.
Did anybody in here talk to her, or have you? Well, I mean, the court. Yeah, Dick, he's the one handled all that.
Four or five people.
I'll make a motion to hire. Motion from Stephen to hire.
Second.
Second by Stan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. If I'd have interviewed, I wouldn't even knew what to ask for, so. They try to keep me out of the court, so. Okay, now the, uh, need approval to pay bills. I'll make the motion. Motion, Stephen, to pay bills. Stephen, Stan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Wendell.
Was it, oh, it's Wendell, not Stan.
I know.
I'm sorry.
I know their voices.
It's obvious I don't know. A, announcements, uh, planning zoning commission will be held on Monday, August nineteenth at six P M, and City Hall will be closed Monday, September second, in observance of Labor Day. Now, I guess I need a motion to adjourn.
Hold on, Mayor, I have a question, um, is there any way we can look into getting the carbon gutter areas cleaned with a brush truck or something? Cuz they look, they look, some of them are horrible.
Well, some of them need shoveled out.
And, I mean, I know we're low on manpower, but I mean, maybe can we get somebody to come do it?
Hopefully we'll get some more, but the, some of them need shoveled out.
Some of them.
Cause a brush or vacuum won't do it, but, yeah.
Lord's Street back, huh, Lord's Street back.
Yeah.
We'll try to get on that this next week, start over, any other, anyone else? Motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion, motion, Stephen, to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second by Stan, this, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Um, let me give you my personal, that way it ain't on my work phone, five oh one, six oh six.